Alright, I'm at all the regular meeting of council to order at 6:04 PM. Okay, the town of Holters is located in a traditional Blackfoot Confederacy territory. We honor the Blackfoot people and their traditional ways of knowing and caring for this land, as well as all indigenous peoples who have helped shape and continue to strengthen our community. If we go right into the agenda here, is there any objection to the agenda? Yes?
Well, I was just thinking, would we want to kind of close session with the pre makers?
Do we actually need to add that to the agenda, or can we make a motion?
Make a motion.
Make a motion, okay. That works, right?
Okay.
Awesome, thank you. And then we're going to go into our adoption of the previous minutes. So we have the April 16th regular meeting of council minutes. Is there any changes or any opposition? No? Okay. How about for our special meeting on April 23rd? No opposition. And our community of the whole of April 23rd. All good? Alright. Alright, so we're going to move right into our first delegation. So we will go into closed session, unless... Let me just ask you, hi, how are you?
I'm fine, no problem.
It's nice to have you here.
Thank you.
Would you... Are you kind of doing a little bit of a presentation type of thing first, or is this more of a just discussion with us?
Just a discussion, because I believe you already have the report to the community. I brought some copies in case you don't.
Great.
But I'm open to discuss this and just kind of let you know a little bit of Green Acres.
Sure, that sounds great. So might I suggest that we go into closed session, so can we get a motion for that?
Should I move? We enter closed session, right? Yeah.
At 6:06?
Do 24, the vice president.
Okay. As per section 24.
Thank you. Alright, so we have the motions. Let's make sure we got this here. Call the question, all those in favor? That's clear, and we'll go into closed.
So we have our next delegation joining us via Zoom. And so this we're talking about food cycle science. Hi.
Hi, good evening, everybody.
How are you?
Good, how is everybody doing?
Good, we're excited to have you here today. So I'm just gonna let you take it away. And I don't know if you've got a presentation or what you'd like to do, but we're happy to hear your presentation and discussion.
Fantastic, thank you. Well, yeah, I just want to start by saying thank you very much for accommodating me virtually and for having me on tonight. I really appreciate the work that the staff at Carleen put in to making sure this all goes smoothly. So you have some fantastic staff over there on your end. So thank you to Carleen. I'm gonna share my screen here and then I will get started. Actually, before I get started, I actually just wanted to request if I can have an additional five minutes for the presentation. I feel it's the best way to provide all the necessary information to those along with it.
Of course, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I will get started then. I'll introduce myself. My name is Jacob Handland. I am the municipal solutions manager at a small Canadian company called Food Cycle Science. And I'm really excited to be here virtually to discuss our food waste diversion program. Brief a little bit about who we are as a company. So Food Cycle Science is a Canadian company. We started in Ottawa in 2011. And we are 100% focused on food waste diversion solutions. So we do this in a more non-traditional manner using our innovative technology called the FoodCycler. While the FoodCycler is available on retail platforms through companies like Vitamix, for example, we also put our FoodCyclers into schools and into municipalities through our municipal solutions division. Our municipal solutions help many small rural remote as well as northern communities keep food waste out of their landfills. So we're currently partnered with 130 Canadian municipalities across nine provinces and two territories. One thing that all these communities have in common is that they often face struggles with food waste management or curbside organic collection either isn't a viable option for them at all or it's in place, but it's just not necessarily the full solution for them or they don't have necessarily the participation in that program that they're looking for. In Alberta, we have programs in Drayton Valley, La Quaviche, the town of Blackfolds, and in the 12 municipalities across Flagstaff County as well. Now, I will try to briefly speak about the issue here that we're trying to address. So the main problem with food waste is that it is avoidable. It accounts for a large portion of our household waste. Sometimes it can be up to 50%. And it's made up of mostly liquid, which is heavy, it's icky, it's unpleasant to deal with. And when put outside with garbage, it can freeze in the wintertime and also attract animals in the other months. So on top of that, when food waste ends up in the landfill, it's in an anaerobic environment. It doesn't have the access to oxygen that it needs to effectively break down. So when it does break down in that landfill space, it ends up releasing methane gas, which is quite a bit more harmful to the environment than CO2. And all these factors make it so that food waste does have a pretty strong municipal impact. One of the impacts is that since it does make up a large portion of our household waste stream, it is causing our landfills to fill quickly. Operating a landfill is quite costly, whether it's at the county level, the municipal level or privately owned. So we definitely want to extend the lifespan of our landfills for as long as we can. When we look at the environmental impact, organic waste in the landfill produces methane gas quite a bit more harmful than CO2 to the environment. And reducing food waste and diverting from the landfill is actually one of the easiest kind of low-hanging fruit methods of reducing our footprint on the environment in terms of emissions. When we look at our community, so we do put food waste in the garbage. It obviously causes odors, it can be messy, it's unpleasant for humans. But it is interesting for animals, depending on the local wildlife situation. Bears, raccoons, rodents, pests, animals like to go through our trap when there's food in there. So removing food waste from the garbage eliminates all these issues and it reduces the overall volume of what ends up being either self-hauled or collected and then disposed them in the landfill. So this can save on hauling fees, disposal fees, can save residents on hassle or bag tag fees or other fees associated with their waste. And then, yeah, it can definitely save the municipality on costs associated with tonnage that's going into the landfill. Now, we often get asked the question, haven't we solved this issue already? There are green bins and curbside organic programs, which are typically common in big cities with high population density and the right infrastructure. But they are very expensive programs to implement and to operate. And there's typically a significant amount of infrastructure and labor and trucking that has to go along with it. Many people in your community might back their compost and it's a great solution, but unfortunately, it's just not feasible for everybody. It's certainly not a year-round solution in our harsh climate in the wintertime. And there's still the concern about animals going into that backer bin. And then finally, I guess the easiest solution is to continue to landfill organic waste. But as I touched on there in the other slides, it's quite costly and harmful to the environment. So I'm gonna play a short video here to just show what the FoodCycler is and then I'll get into the municipal programs. So what we've done at FoodCycler is we proposed a different way to deal with our food waste. It's a technology-based solution. It focuses on making food waste very easy to deal with and right at home. So we've essentially built a small appliance. It's about the size of a bread machine. And you can put in about 99% of your daily food waste, things like meat, fish, poultry, dairy, even bones. And then you push the one button that the machine has and in eight hours or less, you end up with about a handful of dry odorless but nutrient-rich soil amendment that comes out. The FoodCycler can be used anywhere that has a plug. It's really a organic waste or a food waste solution that knows no boundaries. As long as there's electricity, as long as there's a plug in the house, residents can divert the food waste without the need for any kind of expensive infrastructure to be involved. Most residents do put it in the kitchen, but as countertop space can be quite precious, it can go anywhere indoors that has the plug, a basement, a garage, a laundry room, anything like that. We have two FoodCyclers in our product family for our municipal programs. Biggest difference is just the one on the left there has a two-and-a-half-liter bucket capacity, while the one on the right has a five-liter capacity. We have these two because we understand that small households don't necessarily need the larger machine and larger households don't get the effective capacity they need in the smaller machines. So we leave it up to residents during the registration process to pick which one is most suitable for them. And I just want to quickly emphasize on this slide, it's about a 90% reduction in the weight and volume of food waste from the before to the after during that eight-hour process. The end product is not finished compost. It's a completely different process than composting, but it is processed and turned into what we would consider to be more similar to a fertilizer. So it's high in nutrient value, quite dense in nutrients actually, so you want to spread it into your garden quite thoroughly. But it is beneficial to soil health and to plant growth. And it uses minimal electricity between 0.8 and 1.5 kilowatt-hours of power to run that eight-hour cycle. Now, on to the uses of that byproduct. Most residents in our municipal programs like to add it to their garden. Even in the wintertime, they'll collect it in a bucket. And then when spring planting comes around, they have a nice bucket of an alternative to fertilizer that they can integrate right into their soil. But we understand that not everybody has a garden or wants to have a garden. So it can also be added to backer composters and similar methods there. Leaf and yard waste systems, compost sites, sometimes local farmers or local community gardens will also join in on the partnership to be a drop-off or pickup for the byproduct. And then it can also go into curbside organic programs as well and be processed in those facilities. Last slide before I actually dive into what our programs are. So just quickly comparing the, I guess, the economic impact of the FoodCycler when you compare it to the more traditional method of waste management. The traditional method, it's a heavily burdened system. You're typically putting CO2 emitting trucks on the road for collection. And there's costs associated with that through labor, maintenance. With the FoodCycler program, it's a truly decentralized approach. So we're actually tackling the issue rate at the source. We're tackling food waste rate in the household. There's no labor costs, there's no greenhouse gas emissions from vehicles on the road. And there's no infrastructural costs that go to the municipality or to the resident. Now, one thing we've learned from working with our municipal partners is regardless of the location, the demographic, residents are quite interested in this type of solution. And they're quite grateful when their local governments bring them this opportunity. We have some very northern Canadian rural programs going. And we have some programs in pretty dense cities that already have existing curbside collection. And both types of residents and everything in between are quite happy with the program. So I mentioned we're partnered with 130 Canadian municipalities. We've had 100 of them complete pilot programs. And over 10,000 households have provided us with feedback and a review of the program. This is just a snapshot here, but I'll touch on two stats that I personally find are quite important with the program. Participation rate, 98% of participants will continue using their FoodCycler moving forward once the pilot is complete. To get that kind of participation in any kind of waste diversion program, it's really encouraging to see green bin programs. I'll use Ottawa as for example. Ottawa has had our green bin program at the curbside since 2010. Most recent data shows there's only about 57% of the city that actually uses their green bin. So to see a 98% participation rate in this type of program, really encouraging. The other one I'll touch on is that net new diversion from the self-reporting of residents in the exit survey of the pilots. About 300 kilograms of food waste is being diverted per household per year by using FoodCyclers. These are residents who prior to this were throwing it in the garbage and that was ending up in the landfill. So quite substantial in terms of the, I guess, the cost savings for landfill-related costs and then also the environmental impacts. A couple of slides here before I wrap up, but this is just the traditional pilot timeline here. Upon a council approval for a program, our team will step in and help with promotion, registration. Residents will then sign up and purchase a FoodCycler at the subsidized rate from the municipality. They'll use their FoodCycler for 12 weeks. We provide them with material, a nice resident guide, a tracking sheet, and they track the number of cycles per week. And then they fill up that exit survey and provide the review of the program. We then put all that data together and present it back to you to show you the success of the program and feedback from your residents. And then we kind of look at some next steps there. Use that data towards your waste management master plan or any climate change initiatives you may have. And that's just part of what our team does as part of the program. So this is the funded pilot structure here. So it's a subsidy model. We have the retail price of the machines at the top that you would typically find on Amazon or on the Vitamix website. And then we have our municipal discount along with federal funding that we have from AgriFood and Agriculture Canada that's specifically for these programs. That brings the price of the machines down by 50%. We then ask for a municipal subsidy of $100 per participating household. And then the resident chips in that remaining amount of $150 or $300, depending on which machine they choose. We've really found from resident feedback and from that survey, it's a really effective price point for residents. They're quite grateful that they were able to access the technology at that low cost. And for the municipality, it's a low-cost organics diversion program, whether it's just at the small pilot size or like the city of Nelson in British Columbia is doing and putting one in each of their 5,000 homes. It is a quite cost-efficient organics program that has immediate diversion the second the FoodCycler gets into someone's house. That food waste is no longer going into the garbage and into the landfill. Just to kind of summarize what that cost looks like, if we were to look at, just as a clean number, the 100-household pilot program. It's a $10,000 municipal investment plus shipping and tax. And that is a one-time cost for them, those 100 households diverting their food waste for about seven years moving forward, as that's the lifespan of the machine. These are just recommendations based on our experience. We're really happy to tailor the program or adapt it to things like demand, budget, or any kind of waste diversion goals you may have. The last slide here, a lot of points on here, most of them I touched on throughout the presentation. There are just some reasons that might resonate with you as to why you should consider exploring a partnership and piloting this program. Again, I touched on a lot of these, extending landfill life, reducing greenhouse gas emissions. But I think overall, the most important one would be providing your residents with a solution for their food waste that helps reduce the environmental impact of waste within the community and providing your residents with that opportunity. So with all that being said, I really appreciate you taking the time to listen to the presentation. Today, I'm just asking that you kindly receive the presentation as information. If there is interest in exploring a partnership, we're happy to work with staff to bring a report and a recommendation back to council. But with all that being said, thank you so much. I really appreciate the time and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna go to council and see if there's any questions. Go ahead, will go councillor Florence and then councillor Country?
Thank you. So first of all, these things look very, very cool. As an avid gardener, I just think they're awesome. The one thing that I guess is a little bit concerning is that it's more, what you said, is fertilizer and compost. So I think that would be a little bit of a hard sell for just using for like local gardening. But the question that I have for you is, do you find that for municipalities, it's a draw because it reduces the cost to getting the waste to the landfill? Is that one of the biggest draws for municipalities to start this?
Thank you for the question. And it really depends on the municipality. We have many partners who their residents self-haul their waste to their local transport station. So in those cases, it's saving the resident a bit of hassle and then it's saving the municipality the tonnage. But in cases where there is collection, it's reducing the amount and the volume that's going into those trucks and that's ending up in the landfill. So overall, kind of regardless of how waste So overall, kind of regardless of how waste is managed, it does have its benefits both for the resident and the municipality.
Thank you. This, this question might need more for Kevin, but our administration, I guess. If they, if they've done any math on that, if, you know, if you diverted three hundred kilograms per year per household, would, would, would that save the municipality in terms of tonnage and nothing besides?
Thank you for the question to the councillor three demeanor. Yeah, there's, any, anytime you divert, there's a cost. We pay, I think, a hundred and ten dollars per tonne, the landfill now for solid waste collection and correct. One of our biggest things that we see is organics. A lot of that organics is grass clippings. So in the summer, our numbers go through because of grass clippings, which this would help with the food side of things. But anytime that you divert, yeah, you're gonna save, you're taking fees and you're dropping fees. Yeah, I'd have to do some math, but three hundred kilograms per house, I'm not sure how that would resonate with the damage.
Other questions?
Follow-up question, I guess. This would be for Jacob. With, just looking at the unit, it looks like there's replacement filters that need to be done every few months or so. And have you had different ways of implementing that as a municipality kind of bought a bunch or did this register it themselves or what is the, the, the ways that have, that's been kind of managed?
Yeah, great question. Thanks for, for asking that one. So in, we've, we've seen it both ways. Sometimes municipalities will take it upon themselves to order them in bulk, have them for sale either at the town office or public works office kind of thing. But regardless of whether they choose enough to do that, we provide all residents with a link to our online resident portal. There they can source filters if they wanted an extra bucket or something like that as well for the machine, which is not necessary, but some people, they, they do that as an option. They can do that. So every resident who is in a municipal program has access to that online portal. They can get their filters there. Their little deals team up with a neighbor. If your order's over a certain amount, you get free shipping, things like that. We try to make it as affordable for residents as we can. And so, yeah, to answer your question, it, it's there for the residents if they want to do it on their own, but it is also the opportunity for the municipality to offer them as well. And we've actually had some cases where local retailers or local stores would actually, they get in contact with us and they want to provide them for the residents and that's also an option as well.
I just have a question for you about like the product that's created. Is it something that you have to put like directly into soil or like could you literally put this on your lawn and like it would do its thing? Like how are, how do you have to use it, I suppose?
So you want to mix it in with the soil. You want to mix it in thoroughly. We always recommend if it's vegetable-based or it's non-meat-based, what the inputs were, a one-to-ten ratio with soil. If there are meats, we recommend a one-to-twenty ratio. And because it's so nutrient-dense, you really do want to mix it in. So it can be mixed into the lawn, into the soil there. But again, you want to mix it in, you don't just want to sprinkle it on top. The other thing is the byproduct can actually be stored indefinitely as long as it's in a dry place. So that's when wintertime comes around or residents are, they finish their gardening for the year and they don't have a place to put it, like a backyard compost or something. It can be stored just in a, like a Home Depot tub or something like that. And as long as it's not having, I guess, water dripping into it, it can be stored indefinitely.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from council? No? All right, well, thank you so much. Really appreciate your presentation. Yeah, this, this is great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Real appreciate the time and have a great rest of your evening.
You too. All right. Is there, is there any discussion on that or shall we move on?
Let's move on.
Move on? Okay. Did you have?
No discussion. Oh, I don't know. I guess. I don't know. How would we like to move that? We have our RFD from administration office for how we can implement the program. A lot of program.
Okay. So we'll just make a motion on here. All right, so councillor Country is making a motion to have administration.
Director of administration.
And on, and on costs associated?
Yeah, provide, provide a, provide a RFD, yeah, regarding the food waste.
Including the cost for the replacement filters. Soon as I heard that, I'm like, yeah, it wouldn't, we wouldn't have success with that. There's a big cost associated with placing filters.
Yeah.
All right. Including costs?
Um, hey?
Or just?
That's, I think that's, that was it. And then a timeline, let's say, how long do you think Sean, that'd take? Couple months? July? July, I think that's reasonable. No later than July of twenty twenty-four.
All right, is there any, is there any more changes to this on anyone at this point? All right, so.
I'm, I'm thinking of.
Can I ask, can I ask a question? Of course. Would, would you want a pilot program that would be across the community or a specified number of households?
I think.
Because that would significantly change the, the dollar, right?
The pilot program, my intent was just to look at the pilot program for the fifty to one hundred residents. That was my intent, based on their, their recommendations. Oh my god, liberation.
Give me one hundred households?
Yes. Pilot pro, I guess maybe we should probably say it's a pilot program. You say you should put it on the lawn?
He said you can.
You should mix it with their.
If it's fertilizer, it'll burn, it'll burn the lawn.
Yeah, put it grass.
But, but you put fertilizer on your lawn as it is, right? Yeah, but like, I'm, that's what I'm saying though, like if you were like, do this. Like, it'll be okay.
It, it would also like, um, different amounts of nitrogen.
Uh, yes.
And slow release.
That's fertilizer, yeah. My, my landscaper has these.
Ah, okay. So don't just like.
It's taught me things.
Okay, okay. All right. Am I good to make, make this, to read this then? Everyone's feeling okay with it? Okay. So moved by councillor Country's question, it says Debbie Moore. Oh, yes. Uh, that council direct administration to present an RFD to council regarding the Foodcycle Science Corporation pilot program for fifty to one hundred households and its impact on operations no later than July of twenty twenty-four. Is there any questions on the motion? All right. Would you like to speak to this at all?
I think we saw some, some good adva, potential advantages in the presentation that can bring to our community and, and, and help the environment as well. So I think it's, it's an opportunity for a win-win at a, at a low cost and potentially could maybe not balance out with our waste system, but support it, I guess. So support, support reducing our, our environment impact, so.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to this? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I think this is great. I just kind of wonder how aligned it is to our strategic plan for just chasing a, a nice idea. I, I mean, I'm all for having an RFD brought to council, but my question would just be when it comes to line up strategic plan, make sure that we're hitting our priorities.
Okay.
As well. I, I think, but as, as I read this, it doesn't look like a lot of resources would go into providing that information. Impact on operations, I suppose if we just sort of break down the cost to, for organic waste going to the landfill. And a call to the company to see what it would look like, what would be the process to rule it out, I suppose. I'd like to see sort of a bit of a financial breakdown because there is some financial implications for the community as well, right? If we are going to look at fifty to one hundred, that might be some, you know, in terms of the municipal subsidy that we provide to their residents. So that might be nice to see a little of that, but I suppose we can just do it on our own with our, with the numbers in front of us. Sorry, yes. So I'm supportive just looking into it, just to, just to get an idea.
And for myself, I like, I actually think this is kind of interesting. When I look at our strategic plan here, one of our values is innovation. And this is something where it's looking at a problem in a different type of way. I think that it's something even too when we talk on there about provide culprits residents with exceptional services, it's another way of doing something. And so I would like to learn more about this and how it could be used, potentially with our new community garden, things like that. That's why I was asking about sprinkling. Cause I was thinking about like what other uses could be used for this. And so I would just be curious to, to learn more about this. So I, I'm in support of this. Would anybody else like to speak? Councillor Country, would you like to close at all?
Nope.
All right. So councillor Country made the motion, the council direct administration to present an RFD to council regarding the Foodcycle Science Corporation pilot program for fifty to one hundred households and its impact on operations no later than July of twenty twenty-four. I am going to call the session. All those in favor, motion is carried. All right. Moving along now, we do have a report from the front of us. We've got two today. One of which I started is the director of operations report. I will go to council and see if there's any questions on this. No questions? Thank you for your report. It is excellent. Yes.
Sorry, no questions, but I'm really excited about street sweeping and sprinkling. This is absolutely my favorite time of year and just, just really looking forward to getting the streets swept.
They're getting a washing, right?
They're getting, I know. Do you know the street sweep could come before the washing? That's always the, the dream, right?
Yeah, it's always, I guess, if I need, just highlight a couple of things, just item one on the community energy conservation grant. If council's looking favorable on that, we have the money available in reserves to fund it. Hundred seventy-four for the, in the community center reserves, a hundred and seventy-four thousand. And for the shop and common services, we have seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in reserves. So these items are already aging infrastructure, parts of our infrastructure. And this might be a benefit to get them at a fifty percent discount replaced in the energy efficiency. So just wanted to get the, see if there's now that they can pull one through with that before I get into the rent out issues this week.
I, I see it as a tremendous benefit for us, for sure. We need to do it. That's why I do it, energy efficiency with grants.
Absolutely.
So is it through, through the mayor to the director of budgets? So if the grants then don't get approved, will the projects not go ahead or will it come back to council to say, well, we already started on this, now we gotta keep funding it?
I wouldn't start all the project until we're approved. I've got some estimates together for pricing, so just applying for the grant. So we would make it contingent on receiving the grant. We do work.
And then we would just have a conversation on the necessity of it? Cause these do have to be replaced, right?
An example, the, the furnaces are over twenty years, thirty years old. So they're gonna need to be replaced in the next ten years anyway, or sooner if they fail. So that's, that's my way of looking at this, is, and becoming more energy efficient.
Go ahead, Debbie Moore.
Yeah, thank you. Just a question, if the tenders are going out for the community center parking lot paving projects by the week of May sixth?
Yeah.
Is there still gonna be enough time to possibly finish that this summer after we receive all the tenders and everything?
That's the intent, actually. There's a little bit of a delay on that again as well. We're editing today with the engineers and the lighting for the parking lot. So we have to get some things through for us first, where the lighting standards go. Of course, we have to put the infrastructure in for that, the conduits and the electrical will be underneath the asphalt. So we're, we're working on that part. I, I was pretty hopeful getting the tenders out this week, but that might not happen yet.
May or May ninth, we'll see.
We'll see. We're, we're trying to push through some of the challenges.
Any other questions?
The idea was it would go up with the road, the sidewalk, prepare for a ground tender.
And I was pretty, I was bothered with the community garden. I was hopeful to get, the ground were finished this week, but as you can see on the sidewalks, I didn't have me either. I did put weather dependent there, but it is a priority to get it going.
Council is interested in moving forward with that ground program, perhaps a motion to.
Yeah, because it might be, well, there would have to be an amendment to the budget, correct?
There may be a couple of ways that we can do it. If you, if, if, take it as a separate piece, a motion passed to approve those with their funding as a separate motion and then approving the budget separately, kind of depends on how council's, they can.
Just a motion to, with the off in reserves.
Yeah, it's not gonna affect the operating function whatsoever.
It can, and it could, it can, it could be done now, it could be done when the, the ground is approved or all approved, made all the addresses. And you had any time to authorize that funding for it, but not at time.
Does the grant application apply or is this a motion of council?
I don't believe so. But I've written that, and I've, I've been in all my presentation with the, as well, and that wasn't brought up. So it is first come, food served, so I think it's a call this week to make the grant application together.
So we could do a motion subject to grant approval or we could, I guess what Kevin is asking is, can he go ahead and make the application with council's consent? So he's not.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that, I think that we were all in agreement that to go ahead with the application. If, if for whatever reason it fails, I would like it to come back to council, wanting more information to authorize the purchase if we were to do that. And so that's my preference. I'm not sure if anyone else has a different one.
Those are intent.
Yeah, okay. Not to make a motion today though.
Well, it doesn't matter. She can make them later today, but I didn't want her to go through the work if council wasn't.
Yeah, I.
I was also on board with, I'll make the application. If we get approved for the grants, then I can bring it to council.
Okay. Does that work for everybody? No motion right now, but carry on and then, do we need to, do we need to come back? Okay, excellent. All right, if there's no further questions, we'll move on to the director of community development report. Again, we'll do the same thing. Council, is there any questions? Go ahead.
On the upcoming, upcoming camps that we have already, like I, I see, I see that, see this, looks like it's a good uptake so far because one of them's already full, right? So are they, do they come through the town or do they go straight to FCS?
So due to mayor to the councillor, they can register, if it's the FCS camp, then they have registered through FCS. If it's the families ties camp, then they have registered through family ties. There's no registration that's happening through the town. We're just assisting with the promotion up.
Best kind.
Yeah. It's good and smart.
And go ahead.
Just a follow-up question to that, through the mayor to the director of community development. So if, if the waitlist, when I looked to like the day they posted it, I was like, oh, this is great, I'm gonna register my kids. And, and yeah, there was like four spots left and it was, it's day one. So based on the high numbers of people registering, is there a potential to open up more weeks? Or would it be maybe a future year thing?
Yeah, through, through the mayor to, or through the mayor to the councillor, yes, it would probably be future years that we'd be looking at. The programming that we have this year was entirely staff-dependent. They're also running some of our camps in other communities. So unfortunately, they just don't have the lead to be able to add additional weeks here. And so the way that they have set it up as well is, the intention was that people could register for July and be on waitlist for August and vice versa. So we tried to involve as many families as possible rather than having the same kids attend both camps. And then as they get closer to those camp dates, if spots haven't filled up with different kids, then they would go through the waitlist, so.
Yeah. Thank you. But first, I just wanted to say that it was fantastic, our recreation master plan up in houses. I think it's amazing that they identified that our youth was one of the most engaged or the most engaged session that they've ever had. That's so cool. But did you get any indication of numbers of responses?
Yes, through the mayor to the councillor, I did receive some information from the consultants this week. We had just over eighty households. We had just over eighty household responses and thirteen staff or youth responses. The household responses, that's approximately eight percent of our households. And they said that is actually a really good rate, response rate for any community. So they, they were quite happy with that. We actually, we did that one final push where we extended it from Wednesday until Sunday. And we did get a small handful of additional responses from that, so good uptake from, for sure.
That is so good here. Thank you.
I have to say that like if those camps are filling up, that's really exciting, right? I think it's really great, especially for the first year. If, it's, it's not great for people who can't get into them unfortunately, but like if we're seeing such good uptake and a, a way to see how it works this year and potential changes for next year and maybe it'll be so well attended that people will be just screaming for it next year. So I think that that's great. I'm excited about that.
Yeah, we're, we're already thinking about the future and what can we do in a few years, so. It's, it's going to be really interesting just to see what the feedback is from both groups that are doing the camps and I think one of the, the big wins that we're having this summer is the ability to have the kids stay where they're at and shower. That really was something that we heard loud and clear from the community through that new survey that we did. And so to, to be able to say they're there, they're supervised, just make sure for any media or community members watching tonight's meeting that they bring their lunch. Snacks provided, lunch is not, so, but I think that was a, a really big win.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think with that too, it'll be, I'll be interested to see, because it is a free program. How that goes too, right? Because sometimes with free programs. People don't always participate, like participate as they indicate that they're going to and just seeing how that works out in terms of that and. Yeah, I guess just enrollment in general. So that's great. Thank you. Anything else from council, um, it's your part? Alright.
Before you move on, Martina, if I might, I'd like to have, and I know you've sort of already informally done that, but I'd like to, to introduce her, young intern.
Yes.
Yes, we've been able to welcome totally into our organization as of yesterday. Great for half a year and be able to teach her the things that we know and hope that that's good wisdom that we can impart. And we're grateful for her for being interested in municipal government and the finance side of things to, to create the future minds of municipal government. So very excited to have her here. She'll be joining council meetings and joining, once the leadership team to kind of see where, where the municipal world, what it looks like and then how it goes from high level things, council meetings and things to the day to day tasks. Also, if you want to go ahead and introduce yourself a bit, and I'll speak just for you, so.
Hello, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here and it's my second day and it's been good, just having the orientation, meeting staff. And being able to have this in part of my first week already, so that's a good one. So I'm listening attentively. Just learning all these conversations that happen in the process and I hope to be involved in as many initiatives that are going to happen in my eighteen months. I'm scheduled to be here for. Yeah, I'm a recently graduate from the University of Blackbridge. I studied accounting economics and I'm also very much interested in municipal government, finance, public service, I want to see where this unconventional way for an accounting student takes me to, so.
That's great. Welcome. We're, we're really excited to have you here. I know that this is a program I think that I've been talking about since I got on council, so it's excellent. At eighteen months, that's a, that's a nice period of time too to really kind of dig in and, and learn more about it and yeah, so welcome. I'm, I guess I'm very excited to have you. I'm sure that the rest of council is too. We love having more people here. Alright, so we'll move on now to our request for decisions. First one that we have here is regarding our budget deliberations. And we do have the first RFD here that was submitted by our fire department regarding the, regarding the.
Radios.
Radios. So thank you. And so we have this in front of us. I don't know if anyone would like to speak to this beyond what's already there. We didn't have this conversation at committee of the whole. Is there anything from administration?
I would leave that to my director.
For, for, sorry.
Fire.
For the fire. I was like, I was like, are you doing fire?
Oh, I can't get out of the whack.
But if there is only a good thing, it'd be moving to a better. I know it's communication, but.
Somehow got out of the whack when I brings it this, okay. Yeah, no, I can speak to this. This was really just a clarification of the conversation that we had at the committee of the hall. Last meeting in April and we thought it would be of value for council if we had put an RFD together. So you can actually see in black and white and justify the conversation that was had and the recommendation that was brought forward from committee of the hall, so. And currently for putting that together and for, really for providing us the information on sort of short notice. And it was a lot of money and the conversation kind of expanded quicker than we had anticipated, so we thought there would be some value from writing U N, of course, the public with some background on the radios, how many were needed, why they were needed and what our approximate cost would be. And we do anticipate it would come in actually a little less than one sixty five. But that was the motion that was brought forward and of course we'd be happy to do it. I'd do that, but.
Great, thank you. Alright, so we have this information in front of us. Would, would anybody like to, to make a motion on this? Okay, go ahead.
And that council grew up to one hundred and sixty five thousand funded from the fire reserve for the purchase of eighteen radio units for the culprits fire department.
Excellent. So Councilor Potry has made this motion. Is there any questions on the motion? Would you like to speak to the motion?
I would, yes. I really appreciate this RFD coming forward and I was going to say all of this work, but we know it isn't currently. I love it. I love it so much. Alright, yeah, but it's, I think it's just good to have this, this information written in, in the RFD and, and brought to, to us so that we can look at it, but also just to take the public along with us. I think when we had the information presented at our last meeting. For me, I, I just always think a little bit of time just to do our things and to see some numbers. So when the conversation was, like you said, escalated kind of quickly and it was just, okay, now we're doing this, now we're doing this, now we're doing this. I didn't feel comfortable approving it at that time and now with this information, I'm feeling much more comfortable approving it. So these, these radio units are incredibly important to the safety of our firefighters as they are out wherever they are in different places and for their communication. And so that's why I'm just part of this.
Thank you. Would anybody like to speak to this?
I'd say a few words. And to have anyone who is coming along with this and sees the cost of this, it's like, it is, it is baffles me how crazy fire department radios are. But as, as I think was explained very well by the fire department that they're, they're not just a normal radio, they have to cook, they can cook it on and save a person's life, so. Survive, I guess, I guess I'd say. And so. And it was shocking for me to hear that the fire department is kind of under supply, I guess, at the moment if there was a large event, so for that reasons, I will be supporting this motion.
Any one else? Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to extend a thank you to the fire department for actually bringing this to our attention. It's one of the things where we're changing the budgeting process. We're inviting the different departments to talk to us with their needs and I think that this is a, an area where there's definitely a gap that needs to be addressed, so I appreciate them bringing this to our awareness because before they brought this up, I had no idea that they're running so short on radios, right? And like Councilor Potry said, yes, it does have a big price tag, but you can't really put a price tag on safety. And when I read the part about, you know, the previous radios not being able to alert somebody that they're in distress, if they're in a fire per se, and I would rather have them have the tools to be able to get the help that they need. And I would hate personally if we didn't support this and something happened to somebody.
And it was important that all responders have the same communication license rate and can communicate under all circumstances, so that was of great value.
And I think if I were to speak, I would reiterate what everyone said. We had a very thorough, thorough discussion, I felt, when we, when this was initially brought forward. But I do appreciate that it was brought forward as an RFD and I do support that and I think it's really important to bring to attention that it does come from the reserve funds as well. So the money is there, it's available for these kinds of purchases.
And if I may, some of those reverse ups were actually derived from the guys taking time out of their day to night last year to support the yellowhead fires, et cetera, which.
And that's almost half of the purchase, right?
Almost half of it.
Came from their, their time up.
Yeah, at least, and actually maybe a little more than half or so. In many ways, they actually did a lot of this area themselves, of course, using our equipment, but I think it's all fair and balmy. It was too good cost.
I just agree with everything that's been said here. Safety is important and we value our fire department and want them to stay safe, so I also am in support of this. Alright, would, would you, would anybody like to speak again? Would you like to close? No? Okay, so it was moved by Councilor Florence. The council procured up a hundred sixty five thousand dollars funded from the fire reserve for the purchase of eighteen radio units for the culprits fire department. I'll call the question. All those in favor? That's carried. We'll now move on to the, the town budget, the twenty twenty four final budget. I'm going to, again, we've got this in front of us in a report, but I'm going to turn this over to administration to see if there's anything else that you think we need to know before we go through.
Absolutely. I will turn it over to Mr. Patsy.
Thank you. So our previous, the whole meeting back in, in April, we made it all the way through the operating budget, got into the capital budget. We got started a little later in the, in the evening to get, to get through it all. I'm hoping that's not the case tonight. We're already at quarter at eight, so hopefully we can get through everything tonight as well. And so just to, as, as Councilor Florence had said about having some time to think about things, I'm sure you've had some time over the last two weeks to think about. I'm sure you've spent a lot of time thinking about the budgets last two weeks, all of your free time on that, to just really, really dive into it, so. So happy to answer any of those questions that came up in, over your, 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 your thought period at that time. I don't remember where we left off on the capital budget pieces. I think we were pretty well through most of them. That there wasn't, there wasn't really a lot of different changes from the from the interim budget. Just there was the community, community center parking lots, which had a motion a few weeks back, approved that one. Radio units, one that had been approved for just, just right now. And then there was the auto pulse system where they had some grant funding and a little, a little, a little updated funding on that. The grant they received is about sixteen thousand and so I've included in there about another forty two hundred dollars to be covered by the, the fire reserve for any, any difference in that cost to make up the rest of that. And then a small update on the network server, just a couple of thousand dollars more, just to make sure we get all the costs encompassed in that one after I've worked with our, with the ride for that, so. Again, that becomes from the, alright, so the administration reserve. Other than that, there's not really any more changes to these projects. I believe that's everything. A few of them are on the cusp of being finished. While fire truck. The, the wetland has a couple of pieces that are still outstanding. The pillar works shop addition is completed, but it needs to be in the budget to approve the funding for it in twenty twenty four. But those, those, what was outstanding at the end of twenty twenty three is now completed.
I'm not mistaken.
So happy to answer any other questions about any of the capital projects that are on that list. Paul's about to, do you have any questions for projects?
Sure. Questions for council? Go ahead.
On the capital budget, under infrastructure, construct the wetland, it says ten thousand dollars. I know a wetland costs way more than that, so what, what is this little flip of millions of dollars besides?
Just a minute, Councilor Potry, it, it's just some of the lighting that has to be finished up.
Yeah, if there's some minor deficiencies and changes that have to be finished this year. That's, that's all that is.
So the, the bulk of the project is completed, the, you know, the five million dollar portion of it is completed. It's just that last little tiny bit that didn't, that has just.
There's also a few deficiencies that the contractor needs to finish as well, so we're working through those.
Any other questions?
So this isn't about capital, it's about operating, is that?
If, if, I would, while wrong with capital, I'd rather finish the capital and then, and then, and then we could go back and operate it for sure. If there's no more questions on capital.
Okay, all good with capital? Yeah?
Okay, just, just, so just going back a little bit. It's just a question of clarification for administration. I'm not sure whom, but when we were talking last meeting about the municipal planning and zoning in the subdivision stuff. Sean had mentioned that it was kind of like a wild card because we are not, we're kind of reducing it, but then reducing one line, but kind of lifting the other line. So we're taking out like a personnel chunk of it, but increasing our contracted costs for ORS. And so the bottom line is kind of staying the same. And so I wonder, is there any room in there to maybe further reduce those personnel costs or are we keeping those personnel costs on there for the hourly rate?
Yeah, so the reason we've got it as is, is I'm still working through with both lengths from ORS. And internally as to, and in fact, I've been working on a deal. Profile update starting this morning. So we'll either be having assistance from ORS or we'll be having internal assistance one way or the other. So we're not sure which line items going to carry the weight at the end of the day, but we know that we need to account for those costs in one or the other of those lines. So my concern at the end of the day is the bottom line, not necessarily the specifics of those two lines, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, it, it totally makes sense. And I guess one of the reasons why it's coming out for me is because when I was thinking about that again, as we are kind of getting into, you know, the middle of the year and we have not had a lot of development happening, right? And so just wondering if that was on par with what's being projected for the rest of the year.
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, okay.
Now, I will also say this, the MSDA has not had any meetings yet in two thousand twenty four. But that doesn't mean that there's still not work going on in that particular department. So there's still stuff going on in terms of compliance, there's still development permit speed control sets there for permitted uses of development officer authority, right? So I don't think nothing's happening. It's just that none of those discretionary applications have been brought forward and that will come to an end, by the way, two weeks from today, so. It will happen in your first meeting and it will be a good one.
Yeah. Okay, no, that makes sense to me and I, and just as I was trying to recall.
We just need money in there somewhere.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, and the bottom, yeah, the bottom line isn't really changing.
Any other questions on operating?
I don't know if this should technically be capital or operating, but I know previously we had allocated money for a website update and looking at the town app, is that just carried over from previous years, so it's not showing up directly?
Yeah, that's, that's still within, I believe it's under the administration, uh, through the department budget, funded through, yeah. I think just the operating projects reserve. That's, that's fine. Anyway, the, the, that, that project is still in there. Some other conversations have to occur with someone who actually knows, knows that stuff and knows what's going on there to, to make sure what that looks like and how that goes. I'm not sure Chris will look into that as we, as we move down, but it is, it is still.
It's been an approved project, right?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I, I just have a, maybe like a discussion point for council. I know I had previously talked to Sean about this today, so just wanted to bring it up again. So when, when we talk about our, our switch over to LGF funding from MSI and what's being done with the budget this year. So we're, we're taking our LGF allocation and we're infusing it into the budget and then we're, we're taking a similar amount and putting it into a reserve. Which is, is, it was actually a lot to process and it was, it's an interesting point because I think that the reason why this is being brought about is so that when, if and when the allocations change in future years, that we are not gap funding, like the, the gap that it might create if it gets clawed back. So I guess that when I, when I look at the overall picture, that we're putting this one hundred ninety six into a reserve and we need, you know, however much we need from taxation this year. We might have an opportunity to put a little bit less into a reserve than the full amount. And then not have the full four percent, four point whatever increase. and then not have the full, um, 4%, 4.1 whatever increase needed from taxation. And so, um, I think that, um, yeah, just again, as a discussion, because I don't have a motion coming out of this, but, um, we, we talk about using it for, um, one-time projects and things like that, when we also have the general reserve, which is where the surplus goes into. And so it could seem like we're, um, really insulating ourselves for the possibility of MSI or the LGFF, sorry, being lesser. Um, I also was looking at the past 10 years of our MSI operating and, and what it was, and I went back to 2013, um, and other than when they were talking about switching it to the LGFF, so that was in 2021 and 2022 when they split it and did the low cost, and then they front loaded the 193 for 2023, and then we have the same amount for 2024. The lowest it's ever been was in 2017 when it was about 122. So, um, is, is there merit in maybe somehow moving that around a little bit more, so there's just not as much going into reserves? And did that make sense?
Like I might super marry him, of course, council and I have already had this conversation, so I will certainly allow Mr. Passy to jump into at any point that he feels comfortable jumping in. One of the challenges with this, and the province has suggested a number of occasions, that the future of the operating side of LGFF is always a little bit uncertain. So we're very reluctant to lock it in, and then should the program ever get cut, then we'd better go back directly to taxation to accommodate that missing revenue. And so what we've tried to do is create a stable regime, and we are spending those funds exactly as we're required to spend them. And it is allowing us to put some extra funds into our reserve accounts that we might not otherwise be able to. So it is a bit of a momentary luxury. And I guess if the province, and one of the challenges is, the province has always been reluctant to provide a commitment to long-term funding through the, either MSI or LGFF program. So it does make it difficult, and the last thing we want to do is start having very fluctuant tax regimes where people, uh, are prepared for one number and a completely different number is coming because we've been relying on grant programs, now no longer there. For us, for instance, to fill that particular piece would be at about an 8%, 8% tax increase. So that's very substantial, so we, we're confident that we're using the funding appropriately, and it is allowing for us to, to bulk up some reserves that could use, that certainly use it. And I think one of our upcoming priorities, um, will be to generate a reserve policy where we set specific targets, counselor, and then maybe that's a conversation we can have at that time. But I think our goal right now is to, A, ensure we're doing the best we can for our residents, and still providing a stable sort of tax regime, so there's no big surprises to anybody, especially at a time when there's enough challenges out there themselves, right?
Thank you, I have a question on reserves, our existing reserves. Um, so we have two kinds, right? We have sort of our restricted reserves that are specific to departments or ORS items, and then we have our general reserves, right? Is that, and I, I guess just losing my question?
Technically, technically, they're, they're non-restricted reserves.
Okay.
We can, they, these are, our reserves are, except for the off-site land reserve, they're all non-restricted reserves. We can, we can designate names to them, um, but they're technically unrestricted.
Okay, and, and so that was, that was, I guess, so that was my, our allocated reserves, thank you.
And so then it'd be up to council's discretion to move those from one fund to another fund in any way they would like. And so as part of the, as part of, uh, the reserve policy I'm working on is, is determining what those balances, what should they look like? And delineating them between capital reserves, material reserves, operating reserves, and then the restricted off-site levy or development reserves.
Thank you, that's what my question actually was, was that. So currently, sort of our non-allocated reserves could be either general, or sorry, either operating or capital project, right? And you're looking at a policy, which will be another conversation to sort of specify which is what shape.
We do have some unallocated reserves as well.
Yes.
And once we can set an established policy, uh, and even without council certainly at their discretion to move those reserve accounts around, uh, all it requires is a motion, a motion by council. But we'd rather not do it hazard.
Absolutely, and I think that's why I had it in my mind, restricted.
I'll just mention that the surplus goes to the general reserve, that's not necessarily, we did it last year. We put that into that one to kind of see where this goes. But it doesn't automatically go through that reserve on that monthly basis. It's, it's whatever surplus occurs at the end of the year, then it, then it's up to council to decide where that goes each year, where that would then go to different reserves or in one way. But that would vary from year to year, unless, unless council has a policy that's specifically said this is how it is administered. But that would be, uh, without that policy, it's, it's up to the discretion of council every year.
Does that answer your question, counselor?
It, it very much does answer my, my question, and I think it's, um, like it's a, it's a, I don't know, it's, what did you call it, a philosophical thing? It's, but it's kind of like, um, it, yeah, I guess it could go, um, yeah, I think there's a few ways to look at this, but I think that, um, when we talk about stabilizing the budget, to me, that's really important, and so I think that, that, um, that, that kind of weighs more than to put a little bit less, um, into the reserves. We, we're always trying to, like, I know, I'm always trying to look for savings, like, it's just, it's bad, right? Like people are, um, things are at an all-time high, um, people are not be able to afford things. And so, um, this isn't about looking like a hero, it's just like, where can we cut costs to make things more affordable for our residents? Um, and so that's the angle I'm coming from, and, and looking back over our meeting from last time and seeing that big number and the creative things that we, we decided to do with it, um, you know, is there opportunity to do less?
Yeah, if I, if I may, you know what, I mean, I absolutely hear what you're saying. And I'm, I'm so impressed, um, by administration that they've actually been able to reduce operating costs this year, right? It's a small reduction, but when we're looking at a time of inflation, the fact that they're able to reduce to try to offset some of those additional costs with paying for the RCMP, like I, I'm super impressed by the work that you guys have done there. It'd be nice if we could find more savings, but I think you guys have done a really tight budget here in order to realize even just those little bit of operating savings for us and for our residents, right?
Thanks, counselor. And I think it is important to point out that Mike has done some good work in cleaning up some pieces that we, we, we did have some surpluses in and reducing them, et cetera. We did also add some additional revenue to support that outside. But in reality, at the, at the end of the day, the, the four, just over 4% increase that we're proposing, 4% of that entire increase is strictly due to the increase in our RCMP contract costs.
Actually, if I, if I might, when I'm looking at the numbers here, it's increase in RCMP costs are 4.92. And then we're seeing, because of the savings this year in operating costs, that number's actually come down a little bit, being passed under our residents, so that's where, sorry, I don't mean to.
Yeah, no, that's correct, and even when, when we look at what we're seeing for our assessments, of course, it will go with our tax policies, where a lot of municipalities are just accepting that additional assessment and adding it to their revenue stream, we're not doing that. We're only taking a portion of that that we needed to make up that extra amount to cover those additional costs, so, we're, you know, we're caught in that, that, that there's tough times out there for people, and certainly we don't want to add to that burden unnecessarily. At the same time, we also want to make sure that we can keep our municipality in a stable financial position, and that we have the resources to do what we think is important for the municipality moving forward. Of course, that is trying to expand our, our residential tax base, to take some of that burden off our residential taxpayers and, and to, uh, you know, we've got still a significant amount of money to invest in our stormwater management program. We have large discussions coming forward in terms of, uh, our emergency and our first responder services, and, uh, so it looks really good on paper, but there's certainly no, no difference in our home budget, so you can have a nice savings account, but it doesn't take very long to figure out how, how it's going to go and where do you prioritize those expenditures, so. Yeah, I think all the staff's done well, and I appreciate the work Mike's putting to, uh, to the 2024 budget as well, and, uh, we think it's ready to roll.
I have to say, um, for myself, with, with that, I, I really, um, because, because the funding, I guess, essentially could be, it could change in a point in time, right? I'm, and because it is operating, I know, just from my other work, that operating is stuff that people typically don't want to fund, right? Like, they'll fund the buildings, they'll fund the, the cool things, but I think that having this cushion there that, um, could go to operating should be required in the future years, or maybe, maybe if it stays stable and we have enough that we can do a big project or something that if it's, if it's not, um, if it's not like tied, right, into something, I would prefer that we keep it as is. Because I think, as you indicated, to have that huge swing that if we were relying on something, um, and then all of a sudden it's gone and we have to increase taxes by a significant amount, that would, that to me is more harmful, um, than trying to do something with it right now. And I think that, um, uh, yeah, I would just, I would prefer that we kind of consider it that way in, in ensuring that, as a municipality, that we can get to need to operate should some, something change.
And if I might add, you know, if the province provided, this is almost impossible, like a 10-year guarantee or something, we could probably look a little differently at it, make some adjustments knowing what timeframe we have to work with. But this is the first year of LGFF, and there's still a lot of unknowns as we go forward. And I don't have to tell council that as governments change, those programs tend to have reevaluations and you never know where they're going to go, right? So we do what we say, but also, and Counselor Florence knows this, my superior student doing our homework, none of us are taking this money home, all this, all the funds that we put into our reserves are used for important things around the municipality, right? And so it's, I think it'll just to, um, try and maintain a, a reasonable number in our reserve accounts and minimize our long-term debt, which will give us some stability and we can avoid those flashes on our, in our tax regimes, so. I think we have Colhurst, and I don't want to take any credit for this at all, but I think we have Colhurst in a, in a really good financial position, and certainly like to work to either keep it there or ensure that any expenditures we make are going to, and so they're going to bring value to both our residents and our legacies.
Thank you. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, no, I, I just wanted, um, just follow up, so just in, in regards to the, the funding and its reliance on it, I think that we, as a municipality, we're, we're in a neat position that we have a luxury to be able to, um, you know, create a little bit of a splash fund. I think that the average person, you know, if our income changes month to month, we don't just get to go, um, you know, and into our back pocket, um, and, and supplement that. And so, um, when we say we don't want to be reliant on things, I do struggle with that a little bit because the purpose of the operating is for operating, and even the changes with the LGFF program, it's, you know, changing it to you have to use it this year, we've narrowed the scope to things you have to use it for because they want people to use it, because it's use it or lose it, right? And so, um, I think that the language around not being reliant on it for me is a little bit confusing because we, we are reliant on it, and, and we should be reliant on it, and we should be using it. And so, um, I, I hear what you guys are saying, um, and again, I have no motion coming out of this, um, and I appreciate the discussion because this is something I wanted to bring up tonight. And so that is all for me, I just have, just had.
I do agree, though, I do think if I might, you should use it. So all we're doing is just, uh, putting an amount into a reserve account for one-time projects that we can fund out of that that don't require annual operating revenues to maintain.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it will, I'm pretty sure council out there will find some, some good destinations for those funds.
Lots of, yeah.
Of course.
And, and, sorry if I can, um, yeah, I just wanted to echo what, what everybody's saying, what Counselor Colville said, um, just a really great job on, on putting this together, um, even though I, you know, I'm Dutch, so I have to try to find a few things. But, um, so the province, the province announced, um, yesterday or today that there's flood and drought programs, grants coming online, uh, which is a weird time to announce it considering that we're into final budget. So if, is there a possibility of applying for something like that for our future stormwater plans? Or is it just way too soon to tell?
We do, uh, there may be some potential in terms of overlying flooding issues. The challenge in Alberta right now is, of course, there's, if you watch the Calgary news at all, you know that Calgary's now looking at other dam on the west, on the west side. And of course, for drought management, uh, there's going to be extremely, a large amount of pressure on those new programs if, if the funding's there. And a lot of the crapper was in the past have gone, especially the flood protection programs have gone to things like the development of groynes, fingered grains, erosion protection control devices. Saw that throughout the city of Calgary after the flood of, say, 2013. So there'd be a lot of, there'd be a lot of folks at the trough for those grants. We can certainly, and we always usually do have a look at them and see if we have any eligibility, especially in this case, stormwater potentially, yeah.
Thank you. Um, I'm wondering if we're at a place yet to start moving forward with, um, adopting these budgets, or?
Yeah, is there, if there is no further questions, then we feel comfortable to do that.
As I, 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 because I think that the first one is going to be the toughest one, I was going to take that one on. Making that motion to adopt the 2024, uh, final operating budget with the 4.8% increase on that budget.
So you're going to make that motion?
I'm going to make that motion, if, if we're done with our. And I think, you know, that's always a really hard motion to make, that's why I threw myself out there saying, I'll, I'll make this motion. Because for everybody sitting at this table, this is the first time we've ever looked at that kind of number going up to our community. And so, um, I think based on the conversations that we've already had here, how in truth, based on the work that administration did, we're not actually passing on the full cost to our residents of what the RCMP costs, simply because of the cuts that were made, um, sort of in the operations in order to offset as, yeah, you know, as much as they possibly could on that one. And second, I think that the very first time that we've ever had an open house to explore our budget. Last November, we had an open house to engage in the community. So, you know, based on that, I think that, um, although this is a bit behind number and it's a hard one to accept for all of us, uh, it's important to just forward that.
Thank you. All right, so Counselor Colville has made the motion to adopt the 2024 final operating budget. Spoken to that a little bit, would anybody else like to, to speak to that?
Can I ask a question on the motion?
Yeah.
That's just a question of clarification. Um, you had said that this is the first time that we've ever passed a number like this, what do you mean by that?
A 4.86 increase in our, in our mill rate, right?
No, it's a, it's a 4.86 increase from what's needed from taxation.
Sorry, not in our mill rate, what's that? Sorry, I apologize, not in our mill rate. This is the first time we've introduced a 4.86, um, percent increase in our operating request. Like our net taxation increase is the first time we've looked at that kind of number. I apologize, I didn't mean to use the, um, uh, the phrase mill rates.
Okay.
Are you feeling that you've seen a number higher than that ever before?
Well, I think I might have, but, um, I, I don't have the data right in front of me, but I thank you for clarifying that because I just wanted to make sure the, the right info was going on.
Yeah.
I can tell you that most municipalities see numbers bigger than that.
Oh, we are, we're seeing, uh, in our area, we're seeing bigger numbers than that.
And we're not the only one, obviously, all municipalities are seeing that final phase of the RCMP contracts. So, again, I would reiterate, if, uh, we had subsidized it last year, uh, and so now it was out of touch. Now we're having to, uh, we're passing on a full load of the, that contract expense, and if we had not had that contract expense this year, you would be seeing almost zero percent, yeah. Almost zero percent increase, so that's good.
Which would have been absolutely incredibly remarkable.
But under the circumstances, I think most municipalities are going to say, oh, and we're all seeing inflation, our costs go through the roof, and, yeah, honestly, I think council's done very well with last year and this year's budget, and, yeah, I always want to, I don't think we want to unfairly tax, that's never been our goal. The, the goal is to provide the services that residents want us to provide. And the survey that we've got already used here, I think, really kind of solidified some of the positions we held and give us some notification on others that, you know, that perhaps an increase in spending is required here to maintain the service that's wanted and perhaps a decrease in other areas. So we'll continue to try and funnel those responses and we're here to meet the demand of our residents, I think, Council.
I think what's really impressive is within the RFD, you identified that residents can expect the same level of service. So that's, yeah.
Right. So Councilor Colville has made the motion. Would anybody like to speak to this at all? Would you like to close it all or?
I think we've got some great discussion.
All right. So it's been by Councilor Colville that the council adopted the 2024 final operating budget. So all the questions, all those in favor? That's carried. And then we have a motion regarding the capital budget. Would anybody like to make a motion on that? Good.
Sure. I move that council adopt the 2024 capital budget.
All right. Any questions on the motion? If not, so Deputy Mayor has made the motion that council adopt the 2024 capital budget. Would you like to speak to that at all?
I think we've had a lot of discussions on this already, so just keep it short.
All right. Anybody else like to speak to this? If not, I have a call question. All those in favor? That's carried. And then looking at the operating plan, would anyone like to make that motion for the five-year operating plan?
I'll move that, Councilor, for the five-year operating plan.
Excellent. So any questions on the motion?
I don't have a question on my motion.
Okay, good. I was like, what is your question? All right. Would you like to speak to it?
Yes, and but yeah, as the motion's on the table, I'm wondering if we can, if I can have, can I ask a question to administration at this time?
Sure.
Yeah, so when we're looking at the five-year financial plan, we have kind of some certain assumptions that have gone into it in terms of revenues and expenses and stuff and such. So with upcoming, next four years projected at a roughly, you know, a deficit, I guess, is what we're projecting. I'm wondering if our administration, if it's deeply aware of that at all.
So in this five-year plan document, it shows what the shortfall for each of those years would be. And so as we look at these, there's always things that come up that we can tweak and adjust and tighten up because it's, the plans are not binding. They give us an idea of what's coming up. So in these, and they don't have to balance per se. And so in these, we kind of take a look at what the costs are, apply an inflationary factor to it. We're seeing these costs go up or what they still play. And so it's a, there's a yeah, it's just having that shortfall, it'll be required to be covered by taxation. We do what we can to reduce that, that impact. But that's, those numbers at the bottom would be the amount required for taxation in future years. It's not always easy to know exactly what the costs are going to be. You know, for example, insurance, in the estimates, I apply a few thousand dollars, overall in the budget, a few thousand dollars each year as it moves along. And when we got our actual insurance figures for it, it came in a few thousand dollars less. And so we're putting in the estimates, but when the actions come in, if we know these things a little more clearly, we're able to adjust those and then put them where they should be. These work is just estimates to give an idea of what the future may look like. To get, it acts as a tool for administration to look into, okay, what's coming up next? Yeah, to kind of looking to see what's coming up next and see where, you know, if we know something's, for example, if we were bringing on a multiplex recreational facility, you know, in five years, something like that, what are our operating costs? Let's escape with that, you know? And this allows us to then, in five years, start preparing for that. If we're seeing a huge, a huge gap, you know, or something like that, we're looking at a few hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars of funding gap. So do we take those first plus years ahead of time and start building in a taxation piece to mitigate that jump? So we don't have to jump from one year to next year with a huge jump in taxation warrants. So in the case of this, there's not a lot of huge operational changes regarding, due to a large capital asset addition or total, whole new service level provision. So it's just dealing with those areas that may, those slight adjustments to inflationary amounts have been what those look like over the last few years.
Very well.
Great. Would anyone else like to speak to this? If not, do you want to close? Say anything to close?
I appreciate it. All the thought that administration's going to do with the five.
All right. All right. So Councilor Porchery made the motion that council accepted the five-year operating plan. Call the question. All those in favor? That's carried. And then would somebody like to make a motion regarding the 10-year capital plan?
I move that council accept the 10-year capital plan.
Are there any questions on the motion? If not, Councilor Florence made the motion that council accept the 10-year capital plan. Would you like to speak to this at all?
Just that, you know, we've spent a lot of time going through it in the spring and we spent some time going through it in fall and it's a really good, it's a really good 10-year capital plan.
Okay. Would anybody else like to speak to this? All right. So again, Councilor Florence made the motion that council accept the 10-year capital plan. Call the question. All those in favor? That's carried. All right.
Excuse myself.
Have a good night. So no, so no.
Challenges with this, this storm, stormwater.
Oh, no.
Inside?
All over the place. He's just monitoring everything.
Yes.
So things are failing.
All right. So we'll move into the next request for decision that we have. And this is regarding street closure for minors' days. And I am just going to turn this over to administration to find the context and then we'll get council to ask any questions they may have.
Thank you very much. So to Mayor and Council, this RFD is for a temporary closure for a portion of Sixth Street and it would be for a nine-hour period on the Friday of minors' days, which is July 26. And the purpose of it would be to be able to host a night market on the street. So make sure we have a good safe pedestrian area. And one of the benefits to be able to do, doing this night market outside and in this location is because we will be having another event happening at the Legion in their parking lot. And so trying to encourage a lot of movement and the traffic through that area and having folks go from one event to the other throughout the evening and that sort of thing. Of course, as it's identified in the RFD, if we've implemented whether we will be able to move the market inside and so we're not too concerned about that. But we thought it prudent just to make sure that we had council's permission to do this closure. I know that there are other closures that happen throughout the year, remember and stay and upgrade and that sort of thing. But this one's new and just a little bit off the beaten track. So I just wanted to make sure that council would be okay with it. And we've gone over it with other team members just to make sure there's no major concerns that we might have in regards to access to properties and emergency res and that sort of thing. And there are no concerns about that.
Great. Thank you. I just wondered about, Council, is there any questions on this? None?
Oh, I was just, I was just going to ask, so it talks about putting up the support for that they would put the barricades and road closures. And I was just wondering if we would put up some signage to direct the detours. People would know if people are visiting town, like I think it's, minors' days is not just, you know, sometimes your family goes out of town or something. It'd be nice for them to have some kind of detour signage. I think that would be my comment. So forth, that was a clear argument.
Yeah, so we would be obviously working with operations and making sure all the appropriate traffic signage is in place that folks know which way to go and they are nearer to the community.
Any other questions on the information? If not, would anybody like to make a motion on this? Go ahead.
I move that council approves the temporary closure of Sixth Street between 50th and 51st Avenue between the hours of 1:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m. on Friday, July 26, 2024, for the purpose of holding a night market for minors' days 2024. And further, let administration notify the Colvers Volunteer Fire Department and the Colville RCMP detachment of the same.
Any questions on the motion? All right. So Councilor Florence has made this motion. Would you like to speak to this at all?
No, I thank you, Kristy, for bringing this forward. I'm really excited about the night market. I think that's going to be great. Love how you considered the flow between the two events and just really excited for this event. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to this?
I would just be echoing. Councilor Florence has comments.
You told me you shared the same sentiments.
All right. So Councilor Porchery made the motion. Call the question. All those in favor? It's approved. All right. Now we'll move on. Yes, would you like to take one? Okay. Let's have a five-minute recess. Yes? Okay, let's have a five-minute recess, yes? Okay, let's have a five-minute recess, yes? And...
Climb these handshakes.
Oh.
I thought I was supposed to do like a standing wave.
I'm still fine.
Got a little charismatic over here.
We were just having a meeting today.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
But we do want a handshake before you leave, so that was a very good call, Mike.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your trust in me.
Of course.
Take care.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. I suspect we need to get back, I'm not sure.
We had business cards on.
Yeah.
Wow!
The date before we found it.
That was nice.
So they're ready.
Yay!
Well, I'm still here, so you can always still reach out to me about budget things and whatnot, so no problems there.
Do well.
All right. You're good. Thank you for so much.
All right, so we carry on with our meeting here. Um, just before we get into things, I'm looking at the time and just seeing the number of items that we have. Would anybody be open to extending? Can we just do that right now, so we can just get a motion forward to do that right now? Um, would somebody like to make a motion to extend?
I can make that motion.
Sure. Did you want to go, like, we could extend?
I'll just make the motion to extend until 9:30.
Okay.
With the expectation that we'll be out of here by 9:15.
Sounds good. Excellent. All right, so Councilor Colwell's made that motion. Any discussion? Call question. All in favor? That's carried. All right, so we'll just carry on then here. Um, starting out with, where are we at here? We're at our reports, I believe. Oh, committee reports, yes. Um, so we have the minutes in front of us. I do believe that they are all unapproved at this point. Um, but is there any questions from this? There's no RFDs coming out of?
Yes, just a question with the Community Celebration Committee. Um, pretty business has the election of the committee chair, but did they elect one?
Did not have four.
Did not have four, okay. That's disappointing.
Unfortunately, we had the same last night again. So we're still a little bit more mature. Conversation will have going forward here.
Thank you. Anything else on any of the committees? All right, we'll move into council reports. Um, I did not submit one. I was away for the past week and a bit. Um, however, so I have had no meetings, I think, since our last meeting. Um, but I am planning on attending the Alberta Municipalities webinar that is happening tomorrow, as well as I will be heading to Edmonton on Thursday for the State of the Community meeting um, with Alberta Municipalities. That's kind of what I have coming up, and then more of the regular meetings. Mm-hmm. Um, so with that, we'll go to Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. One of the things I just wanted to highlight was the Alberta Municipalities Economic Strategy Committee meeting in Edmonton. So we had a couple presentations from Travel Alberta and Alberta Site Selection Tool. So I passed on some information to administration, I believe. The council was on these presentations, but the site selection tool is a way where municipalities can showcase some of the properties that are available for potential investors or people that want to bring business to a community. So I think that that can be a valuable asset. It doesn't cost much for a municipality to sign up and list their properties. Um, can help put us on the map and maybe fill some spaces, and also create those spaces created. So I just kind of want to highlight that. Um, just another note, there is regional partnership and collaboration, of course, for the EOEP, for the elected officials, so I can be telling that. That's how long I'm going to be starting on my campaign.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Councilor Colwell, would something you'd like to add?
Um, I do, thank you. I apologize, I was away as well. Um, in D.C., I didn't get an report in, but um, uh, I just really quickly want to acknowledge our Director of Community Development, um, as well as our volunteers that came out to the volunteer appreciation event. And our great organizations set up tables, the volunteers, it was fantastic. And I really appreciate the work that went into that. Um, so I did attend that, as well as our special meeting and our budget discussions. Um, and upcoming, I too am registered in the Alberta Municipalities webinar on Bill 20, as well as, um, as well as the upcoming on Monday, the Community Housing Advisory Committee. And that was it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Florence?
Thank you. For my report, I have no recommendations written in here, but I actually just wanted to recognize, um, I assume this is public works, whoever cleaned up the leaf pile on Sundance and Aspen, that's been there for quite some time. Um, it's just been like the vane of my existence and it's now gone. And so that is who I would like to recognize today. Um, meetings and events attended, there's been a few. Um, one of them that I wanted to mention was the Highland Return Development Association Board Meeting, um, because the Director of Advancement has, is retiring, so she's, we're looking to fill her board position, and I've included that profile here just to be shared around, or for anybody who's interested in taking a look at it. Um, and then as well, it's not on here, but I'm also going to attend that webinar tomorrow, and MSDA was canceled this morning. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Patrick?
Deputy Mayor Montana. Um, yeah. I mean, I attended some meetings. And the probably biggest one that I see is the Green Acres Foundation Board Meeting, which are always very full of information. Lots of things going on. Uh, some of the highlights, there are there. Some of you may have noticed that there was in the news recently, a note about someone who had, with dementia, who was looking at a facility, not a Green Acres facility.
It's not a Green Acres facility.
It was not a Green Acres facility. Um, who was unsupervised, and there were some issues there in the news. And so we did talk about that, and how, uh, that of course, all the Green Acres lodges are staffed. It would be very unlikely that that situation would happen, so. Um, but there's always, um, better ways to manage patients and stuff, so, um, they're constantly looking for opportunities to, um, to do that in a better way, right? So that's one of the positive things there. Uh, and the learned funding was restored, which was great. That's, we didn't do any advocacy efforts on it, that was just, um, um, the LSCO was doing that, so, um, that was, that was good. And, um, I'm not sure if this is, this might be relevant for, uh, our municipality, but if we, when Green Acres gets any funding for projects, even under the $200,000 threshold, but they, uh, they still are waiting for approval, procurement approval. So, so for example, they're looking at this re-roofing project that was sub $200,000, and they've been waiting for over two months for procurement to just approve that tender. So it's caused a bit of a headache in terms of, um, you know, normally bits are only good for a certain time period, it could be thirty to sixty days type of thing, so it's, it's caused some issues there that maybe our municipality might be aware of, but we haven't. Hopefully it doesn't affect us. There was some really interesting, there was conferences, some of the workers attended, the Canadian Housing Renewal Association Conference. And probably the most interesting thing that came out was the project, the tiny home community in Frederickton, which is called 12 Neighbors, I think they're twice, but it's mainly, so. It's, it's, uh, yeah, it's an affordable housing, it's not particularly seniors, but it's an affordable housing project, where they not only give them a place, but actually teach them life skills, like how to cook and look after yourself, right? So. Yeah, that's my, that's my report.
Great, thank you. Uh, we'll move on to correspondence. You'll see that we have a few pieces here. Is, would anybody like to speak to any of them that are on there? One, blood. Yes, go ahead.
Um, just really briefly, 14.4, just, um, not even so much pulling up, just acknowledging that, um, the minister has asked municipalities and small license holders to reduce water consumption by 5% to 10%. Um, and at the same time, we're, you know, following the effort, it's fine, so, um, just watching how that shakes out.
Thank you. Anything else for any of the correspondents? If not, we'll move on to other business. Um, and we do have a community grant program application. This is our first one with the new program. Um, and this is coming from the 55-plus club. So, um, we do have an application in front of us. Um, maybe we'll just see the administration if there's anything that you'd like to add besides what's here.
No, just to, I think the application needs to speak for itself. But I did provide the policy. Um, if council did have any questions or needed to look back at anything.
Great.
Um, and of course, by council's request, there is, um, the very last page of the application is that checklist to go ahead and say what are the things that we're wanting to assess, um, as you're considering the, uh, the application system.
Excellent, thank you. All right, so we have this in front of us. Um, would anybody like to, do you have any questions on the information, or would anybody like to make a motion at this point in time?
I think the application is quite thorough. There's a lot of information in that.
Thank you.
I can, I can make a motion then. Yeah, sorry.
No, no, I thought you were done, and I was like, I figured I'd get off there.
Oh, okay. So I, I will move to council approve the Culvers 55-plus Societies Community Grant Request for $1,000. I'll have to look at it here. What was the amount on there? The light is just hitting that light.
1966.5.
Thank you. $1,966.
So fifty?
Fifty, yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Problem with the angle screen is when the light hits it, it just blurs everything on there.
Okay, is there any questions on the motion? So Councilor Colwell has made his motion. Would you like to speak to this at all?
Um, I think that the very thorough application, I really appreciate the work that they put into it. I know that they are in the process of trying to attract more people to come and join them. Uh, my hope is that when they increase these kinds of activities and opportunities, that they will be able to attract more seniors from our community.
Great, thank you. My words disappeared from it for a minute there. Um, would anybody else like to speak to the motion? If not, Councilor Colwell's made a motion to approve the Culvers 55-plus Societies Community Grant Request for $1,966.50. A call question. All those in favor? That's carried. All right, um, we are now at closed session, so we, I don't know what time we'll be done, I'm not even gonna say anything. So can we get a motion to go to closed session, please?
All right, I move that pursuant to section 14 and 24 of the Freedom of Information Protection Privacy Act, the council entered closed session at 8:48 p.m. and discussed the applications of internal interactions.
Excellent. Um, call question. All those in favor? That's carried.
Bits are only good for a certain time period, it could be thirty to sixty days type of things. So it's caused some issues there that maybe I'm just probably not even aware of if we have any. Hopefully it doesn't affect us. There was some really interesting, there was conferences, some of the workers attended the Canadian Housing Renewal Association Conference. And probably the most interesting thing that came out was the project, the tiny home community in Frederickton, which is called Twelve Neighbors, I think they're twice, but it's mainly, so. It's, yeah, it's an affordable housing, it's not particularly seniors, but it's affordable housing project where they not only can replace, but actually teach them life skills like how to cook and look after yourself, right? So. Yeah, that's my report.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to correspondence, you'll see that we have a few pieces here. Would anybody like to speak to any of them that are on there? One, blood. Yes, go ahead.
Just really briefly, fourteen point four, just not even so much pulling up, just acknowledging that the minister has asked municipalities as small license holders to reduce water consumption by five to ten percent. And at the same time, we're, you know, following the effort, it's fine, so just watching how that shakes out.
Thank you. Anything else for any of the correspondents? If not, we'll move on to other business. And we do have a community grant program application, this is our first one with the new program. And this is coming from the fifty-five plus club. So we do have an application in front of us. Maybe we'll just see the administration if there's anything that you'd like to add besides what's here.
No, just to, I think the application needs to speak for itself. But I did provide the policy, if council did have any questions or needed to look back at anything.
Great.
And of course, by council's request, there is the very last page of the application is that checklist to go ahead and say what are the things that we're wanting to assess as you're considering the application system.
Excellent, thank you. All right, so we have this in front of us. Would anybody like to, do you have any questions on the information or would anybody like to make a motion at this point in time?
The application is quite thorough, there's a lot of information.
Thank you.
I can give a motion then. Yeah, sorry.
No, no, I thought you were done and I figured out you're good off there.
Oh, okay. So I will move to council approve the Coleridge Fifty-Five Plus Society's Community Grant Request for one thousand, I'll have to look at it here. What was the amount on there? The light is just hitting that light.
Nineteen sixty-six point five.
Thank you, one thousand nine hundred sixty-six.
So fifty?
Fifty, yeah, yeah, thank you. Problem with the angle screen is when the light hits it just blurs everything on there.
Okay, is there any questions on the motion? So councillor Colwell has made his motion, would you like to speak to this at all?
I think that the very thorough application, I really appreciate the work that they put into it. I know that they are in the process of trying to attract more people to come and join them. My hope is that when they increase these kinds of activities and opportunities that they will be able to attract more seniors from our community.
Great, thank you. My words disappeared from it for a minute there. Would anybody else like to speak to the motion? If not, councillor Colwell has made motion to approve the Coleridge Fifty-Five Plus Society's Community Grant Request for one thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars and fifty cents. A call question, all those in favor? That's carried. All right, we are now at closed session, so we, I don't know what time will be done, I'm not even going to say anything. So can we get a motion to go to closed session, please?
I move that pursuant to section fourteen and twenty-four, the Freedom of Information Protection Privacy Act, council enter closed session at eight forty PM and discuss the applications and internal interactions.
Call question, all those in favor? That's carried.
Sure. I will let you move into open session at 9:38 a.m.
Thank you. Call question, all those in favor? That's carried. And I will move the council appoint Lindsey DeCree to the committee of celebration and John Hewitt